Good evening, everyone.
It is 7:05 and we are returning from executive session into public session of our school committee meeting on March 23rd, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first agenda item is a public comment. There was no call in. Is there anybody in person who would like to speak publicly? Okay, looks like there is not. And then we will move right into recognition. We have some recognition this evening. We have two of our members. This is our last meeting together, and so we are here to recognize their hard work and dedication to the schools and to the communities. And I know I personally am going to miss working with each of you very much. And we have some cards and some flowers here that we will give to you. And Dr. Gilligan?
Yeah. So this morning I was talking with Ms. Marks, Dr. Mealy, and Ms. Bucuzzi. And so both Holly and Helen, thanks for your steadfast leadership. Who would have thought in 2017 when you started that we'd be able to reduce class size to where we are today, open the ABECC, and Holly did lunch duty with me, playground recess duty the first week, navigate the gas explosions, get the MSBA for nitrogen addition at NAMs, hired so many staff that were much needed, and a couple budgets that are just remarkable, haven't seen in a long time. You negotiated more contracts and MOAs than we know what to do. And I didn't even mention COVID, a global pandemic. So you guys always put the students first, and the families first, and our staff first. And this place is a better system than when you got here. So thank you for your service. And we have two plaques tonight.
Two plaques.
I'm gonna say it here and then we'll give them to you guys. So it's to Holly Witzke Lynch, "In recognition of her outstanding contributions, dedication, commitment to students, staff, and families as a member of the North End of School Committee from 2017 to 2023." And to Helen Picard, "In recognition of her outstanding contributions, dedication, commitment to the students, staff, and families as a member of the North End of School Committee from 2017 to 2023."
Thank you.
Let's get a picture with a chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get it.
We're shorty, so that's...
Okay, so we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is consent agenda. We have a donation from the Merrimack Valley Striders. I believe we have a representative here.
Thank you for letting me come before you once again. And congratulations, Helen and Polly. You've been around for all five years that I've been doing this. So just to give you a little bit of background, the Merrimack Valley Striders is a local...
How about a seat?
Say it?
How about a seat?
Oh.
Have a microphone.
For those that know me, you know I've never met a mic that I didn't like. So the Merrimack Valley Striders is a running club with in excess of 400 members. And we've had the great fortune of having a road race on Thanksgiving morning, as you probably know. How many of you have run it? Okay, we're gonna get the rest of you. And it is actually the largest Thanksgiving race in New England, so we're very proud of that. And the good news is that we have been able to increase our treasury such that we decided a little over five years ago that we wanted to do more community outreach. So in addition to the scholarships that we do, we do 10 $2,000 scholarships to Merrimack Valley students. North Andover is always one of the schools that will always get one of the $2,000 scholarships. In addition to that, we wanted to do community grants. And North Andover was the first one. May have had a little influence on that. And we decided that we wanted to be able to, in some way, support the ongoing maintenance of the high school track. It's such a fabulous facility. So we made a promise that we would provide $10,000 a year for five years. And this year is the culmination of $50,000 of promises to the town of North Andover. And with that track, we've seen so many fabulous athletes get into the running world and do so fabulously well. And I think it's kind of cool that our race director, Dave McGilvery's son, is now performing exceptionally well on that track. So thank you for letting us do this with you, and we look forward to seeing you around the roads.
Thank you very much.
Would somebody like to check?
Thank you, Tom.
Talk to Mealy.
If you like this to McDevitt, you should be in that. You're the runner among us.
Good, Dr. Mealy. I don't run anymore.
Pennies.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept that?
I don't know. Do we need a motion?
We already have. We already have made that meeting.
Yeah, we made that four or five years ago.
That's all settled?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving on to minutes from March 9th.
So I'll move that we approve the minutes of March 9th, 2023, as presented in the packet. I'll second.
Is there discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote? Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Witzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will... Is that...
That was the meeting you missed.
That was the meeting I missed. Right. Okay, so I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As you were about to have some significant changes on the board, I would just mention that when I went to the MAS-C charting the course training, they did recommend people vote four minutes, even if they didn't attend the meeting.
Okay.
Or because it's the collective agreement that this is what happened at the meeting, even if we weren't there.
That's a good clarification.
You certainly can abstain. There's nothing wrong with that, but that was their... That was what they recommended when we did the training.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay. We'll move right into the student representatives' report.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Ben. I'm a junior at the high school. First of all, I'd like to thank the Merrimack Valley Striders for their generous donations. The track is an excellent facility. And I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Picard and Ms. Witzke on six years of public service. So congratulations to you both. So first of all, we had Coffee House two weeks ago tonight. We had a bunch of artists and musicians from the high school perform live music in the cafeteria. I heard it was excellent. Ramadan started today. We have a good portion of our student body who are fasting for about the next month or so from sunup to sundown. Four student council members attended the MAS-C conference in Hyannis. They represented our school as student council leaders of the student body. And it was a three-day convention, and they learned a lot about leadership in school and how to kind of energize the student body. The athletic director, Mr. Nugent, won the 2023 Administrator of the Year at the MAS-C conference in Hyannis, so congratulations to him. It's a big deal. The NASVEX team qualified for the World Championships, I believe, in Dallas. And I think they've done this for at least the last year. They're a very good team. The boys' basketball sadly lost in the state semifinals. The girls lost in the quarterfinals. And that wrapped up winter sports. This week was the beginning of spring sports. History Club team qualified for state competition for National History Day. We had a team of three juniors, myself included, present an exhibit, and that is at Winchester High School. Quarter three ends very soon, about two weeks. And with that comes really the final push of the year, quarter four. We have just about three months of school and about two months until the AEP exams. So believe it or not, but school is starting to think about winding down. So that's all from me.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. My name is Nora Elkadiji. I'm a senior at the high school. And just to catch you up on what's happened since we last met, night's care week was last week, and that included dress-up days and a pep rally on Friday, which I thought was very successful. There was a student versus teachers basketball game, my personal favorite part. And then congratulations to Jake White and Suhani Hala for winning Scarlet Night, formerly Mr. North Andover. I thought the performances were great, and I had a great time. This Tuesday, March 21st, the U.S. Air Force was at NAS during all lunch periods to just talk about students who might consider joining after graduating. And then this Wednesday, we had the pleasure of having Kathy Preston, Holocaust survivor, speaking in the auditorium. And so she told us her story of growing up in such dire times and what she learned from it, and just, you know, stowing her wisdom. And then coming up on March 27th, this coming Monday, junior prom tickets go on sale. And then the Peterson School is hosting an open house and career fair on Thursday, March 30th, and then again on Thursday, April 6th. And then finally, Greater Lawrence Tech is implementing an After Dark program with NAS for the first time for the upcoming, I think for the sophomores right now, for the class of 2024. And there is an info session tomorrow on Friday for those who would consider joining. And I think that's all we have for today. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We see if the committee has any questions. Ms. Picard?
Thank you so much. Really, I'm gonna say to you, on behalf of all the students that we've had here over the years, it's been such a pleasure to have the student voice among us and really giving us information about what's happening and what your concerns are. And just thank you. Thank you so much for making the commitment to do that. And I say that to you, but really, I mean, you know, all those students that have come before you and will come after you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. I second what Helen said, but I also want to add that you two have been such a wonderful representative of your classes and the student representatives. I've just really enjoyed all of your reports. They're very relevant, very pertinent, timely, and you guys do an excellent job. So thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
Can I ask a couple questions?
Of course.
Ben, tell me about your History Day exhibit.
So me, a junior named Patricia Voe, and another junior named McKenna Doobie, did a project on Vietnam War photojournalism. And we just kind of looked at its effect on the public. And yeah, we got gold. There were two gold winners, and we were one of them.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And maybe Dr. Gilligan, this is also for you, but can we have the robotics team come back to... Because they were... Their stuff last year was so amazing. Can we invite them back for another demonstration?
Of course we can. The school committee...
Can I publicly say, please come back?
We already approved their overnight trip in case they made it earlier in the fall. So absolutely.
Because that was spectacular.
Or maybe, Madam Chair, you would take the school committee on the road. We haven't been...
We did discuss that briefly at our agenda meeting. So great minds think alike.
Thank you very much. You guys are great.
Yeah, just to add to that, the best robotics presentation was when the robot that they had just literally pelted ball after ball at David Torese for their entire thing. It was great. Awesome job. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. I'll echo what my colleagues have said. You guys are awesome, and it is the highlight of the night, and great job. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay, and you're welcome to go do other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Gilligan, I think you're up.
Okay. We have a few items on the agenda and a few announcements with school happenings that I'll talk to, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Marks. But I'd like to welcome our mock trial folks here tonight. We have with us attorneys Eric Schutzbank and attorney Kim Cooperstein, and our faculty advisor, Danny Oberlander. He's brought some students with him tonight, and I'll let him do the introductions. But this is really...
You need to use your mic, or your mic's not working. The booth is waving around.
I was gonna say, this is the closest I've ever been to the mic. All right. This is a really terrific extracurricular activity. It goes right in line with our consistent and rigorous curriculum. And, you know, one of the objectives is learner-centered activities that allow students to use their knowledge in authentic situations with a focus on civic engagement, social justice, and empowering global leaders. And that was on display at Lowell District Court, and I had the pleasure to go watch this team take on Phillips Academy. And before I turn it over to the advisors and the students, that day when I was in court, and it was long, it was a long day in court, four, three or four hours, I think, I sent this tweet out as I was watching you guys. It's inspiring to watch the teamwork, collaboration, speaking skills, productive argument, and critical thinking skills on display here at Lowell District Court as NAHS takes on PA. And it was a close one, but I'll let them talk about it. So welcome. Come on up, folks. Bring a chair, grab a microphone.
I was thinking you might need to move that microphone back over there.
Sorry. I was gonna sit next to you, Nora.
Student Kim Oberlander.
Slide a microphone over. So for whoever's speaking, I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you for allowing us to share your big day with us. Also, thank you for the invite to be here today. It means a lot, especially just to share our journey over the past couple months. I know Dr. Gilligan did a little bit of quick introductions. Have attorney Eric Schutzbank here, and attorney Kim Cooperstein. We're very lucky to have them. It's not just this year. It's been the past couple of years. We've been very fortunate because they've been very instrumental, not only in our success, but also in building the program. So we're lucky to have them. And I'll turn it back over to them in a little bit. But some of the students that we have here tonight are Abby Mongari, Ben Arkalian, Nora Elkadiji, as I'm sure you all know very well by now, as well as Alyssa Materazzo. So, you know, all these students that you see here today, they've done a terrific job, and it goes beyond words to be able to express how hard they've worked over the past couple of years. This story, which I'll try to be brief and concise with, really started a year and a half ago, when they first walked into Business Law I as a course, and then decided that they were gonna take Law II and jump into mock trials. And, you know, the students, when they first came in, it was really a group of students. It wasn't a team yet. And, you know, we spent a lot of time over the course of the past few months working on what was almost a 100-page case that every team in the state got. It was a wrongful death case dealing with the breach of a warranty of mercantability. The plaintiff was arguing that it was a defective plane design that led to a stunt pilot's death, and the defense was arguing that it was pilot error. So you have to be prepared for both sides. And when it comes to the playoffs, if you're fortunate to make it, and we've been fortunate to do so the past two years. Last year, we finished in the Elite Eight, be it remotely. This year, we were finally slowly transitioning back to the courtroom. So if you made it to the playoffs, you were in the courtroom, and we were fortunate to be able to get that far again. Unfortunately, it didn't end with the result that we were hoping for. Excuse me, we lost in the Sweet 16 to a very good school. But I couldn't have been prouder of the way we competed. You know, when we talk about sports, which we have a lot of athletes in our class, we use the analogy of leave it all on the field. They left it all in the courtroom. And they did a terrific job. But I think one of the things that, when you look at our program, that I'm very proud of, it's not just the overall success of Sweet 16, Elite Eight, and obviously the goal is to win the whole thing, the state championship. And I believe every year we're getting closer and closer because of the students that we have here. But it's not so much the strategy that they put in, it's the culture that they build. It's the culture of holding each other accountable. It's the culture of being committed, being supportive. You know, we have class time. But if you want to be successful at this level, you have to put in more time and effort. And they did just that. They found time to come in early in the morning, probably earlier than they wanted to or that they were used to. They would come on their lunch breaks. They would come during the directed studies. These kids have so many challenges between extracurricular activities with work, sports, family, friends. They don't get enough credit for the things that they go through. But they would find time to go on Google Meets and FaceTime, and they respectfully challenged each other and held each other accountable. And everybody got better as a result of it. That's the culture that we've been building over the past couple of years. And everybody, from day one, whether they knew each other well or not, like I said at the start, this was really a group of individuals that evolved and organically became a team because they wanted to do well. They all bought in. And I couldn't have been prouder. I know we have four students here tonight. There are several others that are part of this group that unfortunately couldn't be here due to those extracurricular activities, but they were a huge part in this success. And I couldn't be prouder, and I want to thank them again for all the hard work that they've put in with all the other students that they've worked with. So again, thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm gonna turn it over to Eric and then to Kim, and then we'll, if it's okay, the kids to share their experience.
Thank you.
So I come with an interesting background. I've been a student, a coach, a judge, and a writer of the mock trial program in all of its aspects. In fact, this particular case is a repeat. I wrote it or helped write it about 10 or 15 years ago. I recognized it as soon as it came up. So it was interesting for me, from the perspective of these students, what is really amazing about them is the culture at North Andover High School, because they don't participate, for the most part. There may be some juniors, but most of them are seniors, which means they've never done the competition other than in practice in the classroom before they go up and do that. They don't have, oh, we started out as a freshman, sophomore, junior, then senior year. They do it one year. And for them to make for a new program that is, what, four, five years old now?
Third year.
Third year, three years old. To make it into the top 16 or top eight teams in the state is incredible. And really, it goes to them. My role is, I look at their questions and say, okay, guys, here are some things you need to correct very briefly. And I always put a note, guys, I'm rushing through this, so if I'm not nice about it, sorry, because I'm just trying to get them to that. And then they take my critiques, and they make their questions amazing. So they really should be proud of themselves. The whole school should be. They were fantastic. And Danny runs a really great program.
Thank you.
So I also do some judging, and I'll bring that into what I'm gonna say later. But I've judged at the law school level, including coming up this April, I'll be judging at Harvard Law School. And my background is more practical experience, sort of, I've been litigating, civil litigation precisely, for 29 years. And I find that this point in my life now, where I'm able to have a little bit of time to work with students, be it the judging, but also coaching, is the most rewarding thing I've ever done, ever. And I enjoy it more than you can imagine. The students, well, first of all, I enjoy working with counsel and with Danny, who's, I've never met a teacher whose heart and soul is more into having their students be comfortable, succeed, and learn. And so I'm impressed by him all the time. But these students, every year, and it just keeps getting better every year, and some of them do come back, actually. They go for like a year or two. And that's actually kind of nice because it means that we're doing something right, aside from winning, which is great, too. But I think that if everybody were able to see, unfortunately, not everybody can see, people can only go to the trials at the early phases under this year's rules. And we were fortunate to have Dr. Gilligan and Principal Jackson come to our playoff round. But to everybody else, unfortunately, it's closed. But you would be amazed at what you see of these students, as Dr. Gilligan said. They are like sponges, first of all, because the stuff that I share with them and I teach with them is literally trial-practice skills, thinking on their feet, things that lawyers don't even do. Not all. I mean, not all lawyers do it, but not all lawyers do it, as well as I've observed some of these students. I'm not kidding. I also, I feel like what's amazing with this group is, in talking about the culture, is all the students have different things going on, but they come together, they step out of their comfort zone, I think, anyway. I could be wrong, but it appears that they step out of their comfort zone, and they come together and work together as a team. And maybe weren't even friends before this happened, but they work together, and they work together effectively. And they help each other out because they are a team, and they all have other things going on. This year, we had a small group. So in terms of their ability to help another one step into a different role, or cover for somebody who couldn't be there, was, it's amazing to me. They're fantastic, and I just couldn't be more proud. And congratulations to you both. And again, thank you for this opportunity, because, to everyone, it's fantastic. The students are fantastic.
Pass the mic down. Turn it over to Alyssa.
What am I saying? What am I talking about?
Tell me about your experience.
Well, I am a witness in the mock trial program as Mr. Oberlander assigned to me. I did not have a choice. If I chose, then I probably wouldn't have chose the hardest one, because the witness is, in fact, that. Most of the time, the witness is in a real trial. They don't have to memorize anything because it's purely based on their encounter with what happened. I did not go through a terrible plane accident, so thankfully for that. But I had to memorize the plaintiff's side's, like, biggest person, I guess, the, it was Barry Jacobs, the daughter of the person that died in the plane crash, and the one that was suing the company, Cabra Aircraft, for the wrongful death of my father. Yeah, it was just, I don't know, like, what?
I'll just add, not only does she have that role the day before...
Oh.
Just want to quickly add where, because she's not giving herself enough credit. She had to fill in for somebody the day of. She was the backup. And like Kim had mentioned before, you know, we were 10 students for several parts. And if somebody's out, you need to step up. And she did just that. And on the day of the trial, the highest you can get is a 10. For filling in on the day of, if I remember correctly, she got a nine out of 10 for filling in for a part that wasn't her responsibility. So kudos to her. Yeah, she's too humble. She wouldn't have mentioned that. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Nora.
Hi again. I just wanted to say thank you, Eric and Kim, and Mr. Oberlander. I really can't stress enough how impactful the mock trial or the business law experience has been for me. I actually switched out of business law when Ms. Coles, my advisor, put me in it initially. And I really, I've done a complete 180. It's my favorite course, and I'm actually, I'm considering going pre-law next year for college. So it really has been a very impactful experience, and I can't thank you enough. And Dr. Gilligan, for all the support in the courtroom. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Like Nora said, I'd just like to thank Mr. Schutzbank, Ms. Cooperstein, and Coach Oberlander. I mean, even though we're a small team, I feel like it does highlight one essential component that we have over every other team, which is communication. We not only built a team, we built a bond with each other. And I feel like that's what's most important. And with that bond comes our ability to prepare. Mr. Oberlander lives by the mantra, failure to prepare is preparing to fail. So with that repeated and with that said countless times, I feel like the communication is one thing that we hold over every team, and it has improved, I think, all of our communication skills and interpersonal skills and the ability to public speak, especially for me.
Pass it over to Abby now.
I'd also, too, like to thank Mr. Oberlander, Kim, and Eric. They were, like, wonderful. They were, I didn't think they gave enough credit to themselves. They were very good, very good coaches. They were, I didn't think they gave enough credit to themselves, they were very good, very good coaches. I never thought I would, you know, be in the spot I am right now. And I would like to especially thank Mr. Oberlander because I am now thinking for my future to become a lawyer. And I never had that passion before and he really ignited it. And so I really thank you for that. I conducted the direct examination of, with Alyssa. And I never thought I would do as good as I did. And I was, I never thought I would be as prepared as Mr. Obie had prepared, has helped us prepare for. And it just really, it was really good immersive, it was really a good immersive experience for me overall. So yeah, that's what I have to say.
Can I just say one more thing? Of course. I forgot to talk about the Harvard Law School that I did mention. So judging, I've never judged Harvard Law School before, but I did the law school level. And I just judged, for instance, NYU won the competition that I recently judged. But they, the work that these students have to do at this level through the Mass Bar Association is much more difficult than at the law school level. At the law school level, both sides argue the same, you know, they argue what, they have to, the same argument, it's just how they do it. This is much more complicated doing an entire trial. Right, they flip a coin, exactly, Dr. Gilligan. And so you don't know what you're going to be doing, right, until right before. And so while I always believe, working with students, that all you can ask for is that they do their best. And that's tru- truly, all we should really ask for them is that they do their best. My observation of the best of these students that they do is along the lines of, it's really comparable to what the law school students do that I've seen. And so I am careful not to hold them to those standards. But by the same token, I do, and I continue to say this, you guys, I could hold you to those standards. But I really want you to just do the best you can do, but I could hold you to those standards. I don't expect less.
I'll piggyback off that, they were excellent.
At taking constructive criticism. You never had to worry about hurting anybody's feelings. You could be very blunt and tell them, well, here's how this sounds. What, here's the alternative, what do you think's better? Yeah, you're right, yeah, this sounds a lot better, right? And when you can have that type of communication with them, to Ben's point, it makes a huge difference. And, you know, when you have the support of everybody in the classroom, top to bottom, like, having Dr. Gilligan present was incredible, having Mr. Jackson, their principal Jackson there, was incredible. It was a great experience because they felt valued and they knew that they were on the big stage. And everybody was there to watch them. And the pressure didn't get to them because they were prepared. And even with a coin flip, hey, we might be plaintiff, we might be the defense. It wasn't even their concern. Their concern was, we're here to win. And whatever side we get, we're going to win.
So, and I'm sure that these folks have questions, maybe you have more to add. But I just say, it was, I've never been to mock trial. It was amazing. And I was actually thinking, this is, you know, these guys could be lawyers, but they could also go into acting. It's better than like Law and Order.
Yeah, yeah.
And so like, all of you were excellent. But Nora, like, your opening statement, I was like, I didn't know what to expect. And I was like, wow, this is big time. And each and every one of you were amazing. And he's not here tonight, but Charlie Cox, he was doing, I think, a direct examination. And I saw him and he was like a natural, you know, walking around. And I told him, I said, you know, you're like F. Lee Bailey up there. He's like, well, thanks for the compliment, but who's F. Lee Bailey?
Yeah, right, 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 right.
Dating myself. Guys, I, it was one of the best experiences of performances I've seen, if you call it that. It was awesome, so.
Do we have some questions from the committee? Ms. Picard, do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. First, I'd like to know, I know you were the witness, but what were the roles that the rest of you played?
So we didn't exactly have enough team members to fill roles on both sides, so we kind of overlapped. I had an opening statement, a closing statement, and two cross examinations.
I had an opening statement and a cross examination.
And I had a direct examination.
Those were their primary roles.
Thank you. And I would add to Dr. Gilligan's statement, I wonder if any of you will consider going into education? Because obviously it's educators who've inspired you this far. And if you can do well with these things, you can do well in education.
At first, like, my whole thing really started from North Endeavour Middle School in the eighth grade. Mr. McGravey's class was the first to try out the civil.
Civics and action.
Yeah, they, thank you, the civics and action class. And we were like the starter class for it. And that's really what started to pursue like my journey for law. I actually didn't even want to join Mr. Oberlander's class come sophomore year because I saw the business aspect of it and I was like, I really don't want to do business. I'm not a big business person, not a big money person. Couldn't, couldn't pay me enough to get into money, or math for that matter. And then I joined the class and I actually really loved it. I don't really pers- I don't really want to pursue anything in law as much as I did when I was in middle school, nor do I want to pursue a career in education, unfortunately. Only because I, I am a student right now and I don't think I could ever see myself doing such a hard job. Like, very, like, you guys do an amazing job. I don't think I could ever do that. I don't know about any of you guys, do you guys want to pursue education?
I think you have a political future, though.
No.
Ms. Spitsky, oh, sorry.
I don't really want to pursue education, but Kim, like, I want to do what Kim and Eric do, like, judge those mock trials. Like, if I do become a lawyer, that would be like very, a three-sixty moment, you know, that I would really enjoy.
I'll piggyback off Abby. I think, I agree with her, that I do, this has encouraged me to pursue law. Originally, I wanted to pursue business, specifically finance. But now I think I've been inspired to pursue law. And with that business aspect too, I am a member of the DECA club at the high school. And with DECA and mock trial, I feel like that when I'm older, I'd like to do the same and either judge the DECA events or the mock trial events, just to come full circle and give back to what's given so much to me.
Thank you, thank you all.
Ms. Spitsky?
Yeah, wow, I'm just blown away by all of this. And your compliments to Mr. Oberlander and Kim and Eric, that's like the biggest compliment you can ever get, that these students want to follow in your footsteps or are inspired by you. So that's, that's amazing, you guys are all amazing. Is this class a semester-long class or a year-long class?
Semester.
You did all this in one semester?
Yeah, several, yeah.
Wow.
To give them even more credit, we talk about how it's a semester, they don't get the case until Halloween. So it's really a matter of weeks that they have to prepare. So it's really crunch time. So when we meet for the first time in September, it's a lot of preparation, objections, how to properly speak, how to properly organize case materials. I give them a sample case so that they can kind of get the butterflies out of the way. I mean, when you watch them perform, you listen to polished speakers now. That's to their credit. It was a very different story day one. And I think they would tell you that. They've come a really long way and they deserve a ton of credit for it. But it was really a matter of weeks. We're talking November first till January seventeenth, whatever that first Tuesday was after Martin Luther King Day, because then it was showtime. So you're dealing with winter vacation, you know, interruptions in the break with snow days and things like that. So they did a terrific job. Like, they just, it was a marathon.
So the class is the first semester and then you have to, I assume, practice outside of class for the second semester?
Right, and then when the semester comes to an end, the trials are still going on.
Right.
So that's where they were forced to meet with me in the morning or during lunch, during their directed study. That's when we would have Google meets over the weekend or FaceTimes late at night because it was past my bedtime. But they were just committed, you know, they held each other accountable and they accepted constructive criticism. Everybody wanted to be better. It was just an all-in team effort, yeah.
And I would just say, if you end up in law and you end up back this way, come seek me out. I'll tell you how to get involved and be a coach because I did a lot with the Mass Bar over the years. And I realized I didn't say congratulations to Helen and Holly as a parent of students in the school system. I really appreciate everything you guys have done on the school board, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
I don't have any questions, I'm just, it's, the work you've done is stunning and amazing and congratulations. And it's evident that you and the other students that aren't here are going to have a very bright future, so. Thank you, thank you so much for all the work that you've done and just, wow, impressive.
Thank you.
Mr. McDeven?
Just very quickly, Kim, when you're judging Harvard Law, I hope you hold them to the standard of these students. Because that, that's where you really should be setting the bar, so. This is great, this is fantastic. This is one of my most favorite presentations when you guys come. And this is, I think, the third year that you've come. And it's just awesome, I love that the program has really taken off and that there's kids that, you know, get inspired by it. And, you know, I think people hear like, oh, I'll be a lawyer, or I'll be a, you know, but you're really getting to understand what that is in high school, right? When you are making decisions in terms of, you know, what you want to do for college and where you want to go and understand all those things and it's such a fantastic opportunity. Just a quick question in terms of how the mock trial works. So you prepare everything and you're preparing as if you're plaintiff and defense, correct?
The first three rounds are round robin, you know your roles. And then if you make the top playoffs, then you flip a coin to decide so that nobody has an edge going into the playoff rounds.
Gotcha, okay. But after that, you are all assigned like opening statements or witness? And that is, is that consistent throughout the entire? Or are you flip, like, from those preliminary rounds, like, would you have been a witness in one of those and then a cross examiner or opening statement in a later trial?
So when we first get the case, Mr. Oberlander will like debrief it and then we'll go over and we'll talk about the stipulations and everybody's part. And then we'll just do a breakdown of all the witness statements and what the case is really about. And then he'll take like a couple of days to just assign us a part. And as Nora said, we don't have enough people to, to really fulfill all those roles on both plaintiff and defense. So we will get assigned a primary part, whether it be one or two or multiple roles. I think Charlie had about four or five primaries, which is very impressive. I could never, I only had one. And then I had three backup roles. And then the one that Mr. Oberlander was talking about on defense, there was a witness role that I was a backup person for because the person who was the primary role unfortunately could not make it that day. And that's about it. He'll decide all of them like right before we, right before we start getting into it for sure. And then once we know our roles, then we'll start practicing and working with the people that is doing direct, that's doing cross, that's doing opening. And we'll just talk about like what we're supposed to say and what should be included, what should be added, and what should be taken out, what we didn't say, what we did say, and all that stuff.
So Danny, Mr. Oberlander, does a great job. And the reason that this program is successful is because he works so well with kids in his other classes, particularly the students in Business Law One. And he talks to them and communicates with them. And then he can tell who might be interested, he's sort of selling business onto you a little bit, which is a really good thing for them to buy into. Anyway, and then he can tell who's interested and those kids that are interested, no pressure, but they do, you know, they sign up. And then before Eric and I even really get involved, before we even have the case, he works with the students and like they said, there's communication. So he helps them figure out what will be, they'll be comfortable doing what their strengths are, what they want to try, that type of thing. And that's how it sort of evolves in that manner. And so someone will be, someone who, did you think you were going to be doing a direct examination and doing all kinds of objections and all this during a, probably not, right? But you tried it, working with, with Mr. Oberlander, and were very successful at it. And the same for all of you guys. But, so that's how it, it works. And they do have to be able to switch sides. But they know whether they're going to be a questioning attorney, which also means an objecting attorney. They know whether they're going to be doing an opening and closing. And like, we had one student, Finn Murphy, who was just, he played the role of an expert, an expert in engineering, basically, of planes.
Aerospace engineer.
And even all of the judges said, wow. So he could do both sides. So he was our expert engineer witness in both sides. And so they, they just fall into place like that and it really works out.
And I want to give Finn a little shout out because Finn was our least, most experienced student. He didn't have any Law One experience. I had him for every other law class, so I knew the person I was getting. I knew that he was somebody that I can work with. And he sat very closely with Charlie Cox, Ryan Connolly, Kevin McElhany, Lindsay Nyman. And they all helped him along through it. So it was truly collaborative. And if you heard him on the witness stand, you wouldn't know the difference between, that, you wouldn't, you'd be, you'd be surprised to know that he wasn't an actual expert. Like, he was, he was the part, he was the part. And to Dr. Gilligan's point, there's some acting involved. He sold it, he absolutely sold it. He was terrific and he deserves a ton of credit for not being afraid to step outside of his comfort zone where everybody's experienced and he didn't have it. And he just constantly asked all the right questions and felt supported. Like, he just did a terrific job. And all the skills that they got, you know, put law aside for the moment. When we talk about what they've learned in this class, I'd like to think it's consistent with everything that we do in our business courses with Mr. Peter Marfione and Heather Bisette. We give them life skills, you know, DECA.
Say, it's absolute life skills. I have been coaching for twenty years now, over. And I have students who are lawyers, teachers, mechanics, all sorts, business owners, all sorts of things. You know, the ability to think on your feet, the ability to speak in front of a crowd, in front of established people like this, which can be very intimidating for some people, is an incredible life skill that will serve you well no matter what you guys end up doing.
Correct.
Just one other quick question. I think, I'm certainly not a lawyer, but, you know, sometimes you have to argue a case that maybe you don't necessarily believe in, right? And so I'm sure you guys obviously talked about this. And you guys were the plaintiff, correct?
Well, we, we were.
Well, in the, in the last trial that you did?
Yes, yes.
So did you believe in your case? Like, I mean, like, how did, like?
I think for the most of us, I think that being the plaintiff was just easier because we all felt like the plaintiff deserved to win. Just because usually the plaintiff is right if you're suing. I mean, you're not going to sue without a reason, obviously, so.
All right.
But, I mean.
That's funny.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, I didn't mean to offend anyone.
Are you hourly or?
Mr. McDeven, to your point, why are they testifying saying that? That's not good for the case, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I had more, I had more fun on the defense side. I feel like we just stronger case on the defense side. I mean, all of them will, will disagree with me, everyone else except for me. Said, will say that they had a better time with plaintiff. I think that's just because I was scared because I was the main witness on the plaintiff's side. I think that's why I like defense better. But, I, yeah, I mean, I really liked the plaintiff. What about you, Nora? Did you like plaintiff?
No, I think we, I don't know, I think it was definitely a point of anxiety for me forgetting what side we were on because I had opening and closing on opposite sides. And I was just so nervous that I would blurt something out that completely contradicted our case and ruin everything. But we did get lucky in that final round because I think we had, we had tipped the scale in the plaintiff while preparing. And we did win the coin flip and we did choose plaintiff. So I think it all, it all worked out in the end, at least in terms of how we prepared.
I would say, speaking as someone who just had roles on the side of the defense, that it was, you know, more difficult in the case of a wrongful death to kind of argue that it wasn't and that it was in fact the person's fault. And I remember getting, I believe it was a sales executive, Mr. Shinoda. Yes, I was cross-examination of Mr. Shinoda. And I went up to Mr. Oberlander and said, how am I going to do this? And what I love about Mr. Oberlander is he kind of knows your strengths. And another thing I do like about the class is the amount of respect that's shown on behalf of the students and the teachers. I remember you saying to me once that your students are your coworkers and Mr. Oberlander will find what you're good at and he will give you roles accordingly. But first, he'll give you some roles that get you out of your comfort zone. I remember I was a witness once, personally, I got cooked on the stand. But on the side of the defense, I was tasked with the opening statement and the cross-examination statement. Oh, no, it was Mr. Dole, not Mr. Shinoda. But he, anyways, he was a executive of the company and... And it was pretty hard to formulate questions, but with the help of Mr. Oberlander, I think I was able to do so. And I was singled out at the end of, I think it was the second trial we did as one of the best performances by the judge, and.
Nice.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Although it was more difficult to argue, I, I had a good time with them. I'll pass it over to Abby now.
When it comes to, like, cases like these, whether civil or criminal, I remember something Mr. Oberlander told me. It was like something along the lines of everyone's deserving of due process. So when I work with, when we worked with cases like these, I sort of put my personal opinions to the side and just followed that mantra, like, followed that mantra within my, like, work process.
And what to keep in mind is the committee that writes these packets every year. So the Mass Bar does these from scratch. They do a repeat. It's usually because they couldn't agree on a case. And at the last minute, they say, we got to pull one out of the file. But they go through a painstakingly process to try and make it so that the cases are not one-sided or lopsided. And most years, they succeed, not every year. But this one was a pretty case that you had stuff you could argue for both sides.
In wrongful death cases, generally speaking, in the civil practice, practice are extremely hard to try because while you need to attack the other side if you're a defendant, you have to do so with compassion because we're talking about the death of someone. And so let me just tell you also that even though they lost that trial again, and points against Phillips, they did prevail on the case, on the merits of the case as plaintiffs. Yes, they met the burden of proof.
No, that was it. It was fantastic. Amazing, amazing.
I will echo what my colleagues have said. And I just, I love the collaboration. I'm so impressed with the way that you all conduct yourselves and the calmness that you're speaking with. It is not easy. And I just want to commend you, Mr. Oberlander, for, you know, as a teacher, we are always striving to create an environment where our students feel safe to take risks in their learning. And I heard some of you say that you were a little hesitant to take this course. And you got them in, and it is so obvious that that least restrictive environment and the trust that you've built and the relationships that you've built with your students really does speak volumes to what can happen when that happens in a classroom. So kudos to you and for the collaboration. And to all of the students who are working for you or here, and the students that are not here, for putting in that dedication, that time, and making that commitment. It just gives me all the warm and fuzzies. This is what high school is about, right? Finding different, exploring different paths, seeing what you want, seeing what your strengths and weaknesses are, learning how to do things that are difficult, that I think these lessons will follow you for years to come. You won't even know it right now, but in a few years, you're going to be like, oh, I had to do this really hard thing, and this is why, this is, now I, this is another connection I can make. So really, this is like the highlight of the night. Thank you so much for being here and for all of your hard work, for all of you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Okay. I have a few brief items. I'll get us back on track here. But it's always worth it with this group.
Totally.
Amazing. Okay. Oh, next up on the agenda, it's actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hicks in the North End of a Middle School Building Project.
Thank you. We had a meeting last week. It was, there was a snowstorm, right? Was that last week? So we met.
I think so.
I think so. We, we met in public electronically, but we were able to discuss and look at the most recent plans and discuss the traffic flow and access for construction vehicles into the site and how that would work and what the traffic flow would look like to make sure that materials can be delivered safely and without hindering learning. So that was, the plan that we have there is solid. And we were made sure to make sure that the routes that we follow would be good for all the neighborhood, the neighborhood. So that was, that makes me happy. We then, the review board this past week granted a waiver for our site plan review. So we are on track to request funding at a town meeting to have a bid package assembled and out to bid and to go to potential contractors and to accept a bid and be, like, shovel-ready in early July. If everything stays where we're going, we should have shovels in the ground this summer. And that site plan review waiver allowed us to really stay on calendar. It's really exciting.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Just a few quick announcements. You know, I know I bring this name up a lot, but Mr. McGravy tomorrow. He has the student-led civics projects kickoff. We had them in earlier this year. So he does a great job with that, as you've seen firsthand. Secondly, I had a chance to meet with Mike Sousa. I think he was the original or the first North End of a poet laureate. And he's doing a Field of Honor Poetry Commemoration. Event, it will be posted tomorrow on our website. I've met with him in person, and he's working with Lorene for us to promote that. And that, the commemoration will be poetry that will then be attached to the flags of honor that go out on the common for Memorial Day weekend. So that's exciting. In the same note, on our website currently today, it just went on today, we've been working with Karen Klein, another former poet laureate. And there's the Ann Bradstreet Poetry Contest. And that's for students, staff, community members, adults. So it's a great opportunity. I put the challenge out to all of you. I'm going to do it this year myself. So anyone else, I think Dr. Mealy's done it in the past, and.
He's won in the past.
He's won in the past. Yes, he is a.
That haiku is amazing.
So we have that. You know, the Assistant Superintendent search is moving along. We interviewed candidates today. We'll interview more candidates next week. And then we'll be setting a time for the finalists to come in and do some instructional rounds, a performance task. We'll have a community night, which we'll promote. And they'll have a chance to meet with our administrative team as well as staff. So that's, that's moving along, and Dr. Mealy's doing a great job facilitating that. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Marks. I had the privilege of attending two terrific presentations, all sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh, six through 12, all the students around the Holocaust in two different programs. And so, Ms. Marks.
Just on the poetry piece, we also are working with Karen Klein. All of our elementary librarians are doing piece poetry with students. So we had, we got paper, eight by fourteen, I think it is, paper in there, writing poems about what peace means to them. They're going to get them to me by the fifth in middle school and high school because they don't have libraries as a class, per se. It's on a voluntary basis. And then those poems are, the plan is for them to be posted down at the Prudential Center, I believe, as part of the Boston Marathon. So, yeah, so that's another piece of poetry work we have going on. So that'll be exciting. Can you hear me? Okay. So up on the, on the screen, you see just a few things to let people know. So Michelle O'Leary, who's our interim director of social emotional learning, is trying something a little bit different. She's doing office hours for parents at the Stevens Memorial Library from 12:30 to 2:00 on specific dates. So the first one was this Monday. The next one is April 24th and then May 15th. So people are welcome to just drop in, meet her if they have any questions about social emotional learning, anything to do with anything around mental health. She's there and is available for conversation. So this is also on the website, but I wanted to point that out tonight.
I think that's fantastic.
It is, it is, yes. She's doing an excellent job, in my opinion. So, but, and just for people to know, this is also up on the website. And we also have this translated in Spanish and other languages. But our kindergarten information night will be Wednesday, April 12th, at the middle school from 6:30 to 7:30. And this is for parents and guardians to come to learn about kindergarten, health and safety, transportation, food services, all of that. And we will be doing kindergarten screening this year right after school gets out. So right now, barring any more weather dates, it looks like that will be June 20th, 21st, and we're looking at maybe a half day on the 22nd. So that information will be made available as well. So, and Greg mentioned a little bit about the fact that we had speakers. So as you're aware, we were looking to provide education, educational opportunities for our middle school and high school students regarding the Holocaust and the impact of hateful symbols like a swastika. Interestingly enough, tonight, between work and the meeting, I happened to hear the news, and the ADL just reported that, that the incidence of antisemitism are the highest they've been since 1979. And I believe, if I heard correctly, that's when they first started keeping this data. In Massachusetts, there were 152 cases last year, which was up from 108 the year before. Massachusetts has the highest number of cases in New England and the sixth highest number of cases in the country. Yeah, so that was, it was just, it really kind of struck me after, you know, what we've been dealing with and preparing for the last few weeks. So I just thought, I would mention that because it fit in with this. So as part of the process, I reached out to the Cohen Center for Genocide and Holocaust Studies at Keene State. And we were able to get two fabulous speakers. So we had Tom White, who's an educational person there, come out and speak at the middle school. So for sixth graders, he really talked about who tells you to hate and why. And he focused that on Martin Luther King and Anne Frank and really talked about why do some people find it difficult to let people just be themselves? So really bringing the kids around to what they could do and what they could think about, how they can change their actions. Seventh and eighth was how we create the other in our belief systems and how to be an upstander. So again, bringing it around to what the kids could do that could be positive. And here you have Kati Preston, and these are members of our Student Jewish Club, who welcomed her and helped support her throughout, you know, just changes water, helped her, you know, get it, get through the school and everything. They were great. So she was a hidden child in Hungary. So she was hidden at the age of, at the age of five. Her father was Jewish, her mother was Catholic. And so her father was taken to the camps, and she was supposed to be taking, or taken to the ghetto, I'm sorry, first. She was supposed to be because, as her father was Jewish, she was considered to have Jewish blood, and therefore she was slated to go as well. Her mother didn't send her, thinking, oh, they're not going to miss one little child. Well, they came looking for her. A woman who used to, at a nearby farm, who used to interact with the family, offered to save her, bring her to her farm, hit her in her barn. I mean, the story was just incredible, what she remembers and how she related to the kids. I think this woman, I've heard other Holocaust survivors, and they've all been very powerful. She was amazing, just amazing. So she talks about what that was like. Her father ended up losing his life in Auschwitz, didn't come back. She lost 28 members of her family. So it was just she and her mom who were left. And talked about that whole piece. And, I mean, she was also quite amusing. She was, she says, her own words, a spoiled child. So she was very pampered. She said, you know, the feather mattresses like Princess and the Pea, the patent leather shoes and the hair done and lots of toys. And she had a Fräulein who was her governess and taught her all these things. And, and then what it was like to be hiding in the hay by yourself in a barn at five years old. And to have a soldier come with the bayonet and miss you by about an inch and have the bayonet stick in the wood of the barn. And then she realized that the spoiledness has to stop. This is real. Like, somebody really does want to hurt me. And just, you know, the whole, the whole process of going back and realizing her dad was gone and what her mother went through and people, other people that she knew, very, very powerful. And the other thing I want to mention, too, is our students have not been in situations with COVID where they've been in an auditorium, listening to a speaker or anything like that. And, you know, I mean, I'll be honest, I, you know, I was concerned. Like, you know, things have changed in the last couple of years. People's behaviors have changed. Like, what was that going to be like? This is a difficult topic for all of them. The middle school talks were supposed to be on a different day. They got changed to Monday. And I'll talk about why I couldn't go to some of them on Monday in a minute. But I did go to the last one. And then at the high school, I'm telling you, you could have heard a pin drop. It was amazing. The respect that our students showed, all of these speakers, was just amazing. And then all of them opened it up freely for questions, both at the middle school and at the high school. And the, the kids were respectful with their questions. They were attentive. They were, it was just, I was very proud to be a part of the North Andover community, watching all of that. So, and I know that just today, one of my colleagues, one of our coaches, her son is at the high school. And, I mean, you guys have kids in high school. How was your school day? Eh, they don't really talk about it, right? You don't hear a whole lot.
I definitely got a lot of details about this.
And that's what she said. Her son could not stop talking about it.
Same.
And kids, you know, I, I was up there at the end, and kids are coming up and they are leaving the auditorium as I was walking up, saying, I just want to hear more about her story. I just want to have this question, I have that question. So it was really, really powerful. It was, I think it was a, it was a fabulous experience for our students, middle school and high school. So.
Good learning experience.
Lorena, I'm struck by the fact that just before this was a slide for registering for kindergarten. And that's the age she would have been.
Yeah, right.
When her, when her world changed completely.
Yeah, yeah. So she, she has written a book. It's a graphic novel. It's called Hidden. So we have, we ordered today copies for the middle school and for the high school to have.
That's great.
Yeah.
So can I just ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Obviously, the, these speakers are so amazing and so powerful. And it's a generation that, you know, is sadly, you know, aging. Was this recorded by Cam? Because.
They don't, it's, they come in and do it. It's not something that we record or they have recorded.
All right. I mean, I just think, you know, there are people in the community who probably would have loved the opportunity to kind of hear this.
Well, I think there might be some talk about maybe bringing them into the community in other ways. Yeah.
Oh, that would be great.
Because we had some, we had some other visitors with us, too.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
That would be awesome.
Ms. Marks, I mean, just to your point about how well they behaved, Principal Jackson and the staff, like, the prep work that went into it, and then the debrief after in advisory, a lot of work went into it. And she was just remarkable. It was, you know, it was so remarkable. I mean, there was almost, what, I think, almost 700 kids. And I sat in the last row. And, I mean, I haven't seen this in years. I only saw one light of a phone go off in the entire auditorium for just a second. I mean, no phones, totally focused. And she was absolutely remarkable, very powerful.
It was a great opportunity for all of us who were blessed to be there, so. So just wanted to share that. And then Greg had asked me to talk a little bit about what happened on Monday. So we had had this planned before. We've had a number of districts reach out to us to talk to us a little bit about wit and wisdom. Joe came to talk to us early on in the year. So what we ended up doing was kind of putting them together in a group and doing a presentation to these different towns on Monday. So myself, Humanities Director Kristen, and then our coaches Jackie, Nicole, and Jen, put together a presentation for them, invited them in. We talked a little bit about, you know, the hows and whys, the hurdles that we've run up against. Very honest conversation. Because, you know, I mean, if we're being honest, none of this stuff is easy. And it doesn't always go smoothly. We brought each one of them to a classroom, and they observed a full literacy lesson. So that included reading and writing. So they were there for about an hour and a half. We were, you know, and we were in the classrooms with them, in particular classrooms. Then everybody came back here, and we debriefed, and we brought the teachers whose classrooms they were in back here. So we had lunch, and they were able to ask more questions about what happened. And we got some thank you notes, but one of them was, one of them made me believe, and I believe our team believed, that we really are hitting the mark with what we're doing. And I wanted to share that with you. They just say to all of us, you want extensive sincere thanks and appreciation, blah, blah, blah. But the honest account shared of the successes and challenges you've experienced implementing wit and wisdom provided us with valuable insight that we'll surely draw upon as we progress through our own curriculum selection and plan for implementation. We were particularly struck by the determination you have not only to ensure student learning but to foster teachers' professional growth. It was quite evident, learning opportunities, I'm sorry, it was quite evident that the teachers in North Andover feel the support. They have been empowered to provide all students with learning opportunities that are not only rigorous but are equitable and engaging. The vulnerability teachers showed in opening up their classrooms and discussing their practice while still new to the instructional shifts of the curriculum spoke to their level of trust in you all and to your commitment to their success. It was truly an inspiring warning for all of us in North Andover. That was the gist of the letter. And I just, I thought that was really powerful. And I can't say how proud I am of the, the teachers, the literacy team, and the, and the work that's happening. It's not done. It's not over. You all know, you know, there was, there's been a lot of pressure with, you know, all of the literacy talk that's out there and, you know, the studies that some have been debunked already. There's lots of, lots of information, but we really tried to be careful and thoughtful in the process. There are districts that, you know, it's been two years and they still haven't implemented anything. I don't think we wasted a lot of time in moving forward. Some people, I said, we do step on the gas kind of fast here sometimes. But I think we know, we do that when we know what we're doing is the right direction to go in. So just really proud of them, and I thought that that was a, a nice message to share, to, to hear from people in another district.
What districts came? There's quite a few districts.
Arlington, Wakefield, Fall River, I think someone from Boston. And then there was a call today from North Attleboro, I think, so, yeah.
Ms. Marks, I, I truly appreciate the work that you're doing with your team around literacy.
Ms. Marks, I truly appreciate the work that you're doing with your team around literacy, especially like for a student, for kids like my own. And I know how hard it is for a district to make those changes, trying to do that in other places. And I really appreciate how we're being cautious and smart and yet, and still being leaders and pursuing what's right for kids and changing the landscape and making that impact for our kids and for those around us in other places. So thank you very much for that work. Really, really does matter.
Thank you.
Lorena, I think I'm hearing you want to stay for another year.
I will second that.
I love my job. I love my job and I am so proud of the people I work with, not only the coaches and Kristen as a curriculum director with literacy, but those teachers that opened up those classrooms. I mean, I'm telling you, top notch, top notch teachers. And it is a vulnerability, you know, it very much is for anybody who's been a teacher. You know, we've worked on opening doors. You know, teachers used to go into their room and close the door and that was it. They're, they're opening their doors to other teachers within the district, within their schools, but also to teachers in other places. Like, that's huge.
That is huge.
And it speaks to what the coaches have been able to do with these teachers and the trust that's there. And it's, you know, I tried to stress with the districts that came in, like the honesty. You need to listen to what the teachers are telling you. We need to hear what's going on and not pretend like, you know, sometimes you want to, this has to happen and you try to have sort of that wall between you and what's really happening because you've got this mission here and then the reality is here. You can't have that. We have to, we have to be able to hear what's going on and to support people in that work. And I was just so, so proud of all of them. It just really is, it's, it's, it's great. It's really good work, so.
Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better myself, so. That's going to wrap up the superintendent's report.
Well, that was a great note to end on. Okay, we're going to move right into the chair's report. We are a little behind schedule, but that is okay because it has all been really good stuff. I'm happy to spend a long time on good stuff. Okay, so just a quick update that the Educator Hall of Fame nominations are due by April 30th. Ms. Fietzke, is there another update that we need for that?
Nope. The link is online to submit the nominations.
Great. We have a community chat, April 1st. Mr. Hicks, I believe that's you and I, at the library at noon. So looking forward to that.
That's next Saturday.
Wow, that is next Saturday.
It is.
April Fool's Day.
April Fool's Day. We won't play any jokes, we will be there.
We will be there.
And then we had a request to negotiate from our administrative assistants. Mr. Hicks will serve as the school committee member who is going to represent us in the negotiations. And they have requested expanded bargaining as the other units have also begun their bargaining process with the expanded bargaining process. So moving forward with that, I didn't add this into my chair's report, but I do want to acknowledge that Ms. Bicard, even though she is leaving the committee, has agreed to stay on as negotiation team member, as a part of a, kind of a subcommittee for the negotiations with the teachers and the TAs, at least until we think the end of the school year, as kind of as an, as needed basis. And we thank her for that. Am I missing anything on those updates? Okay. Great, then that is what we have for the chair's report. We do not have any old business. And move on quickly to new business. We have a first read of revolving accounts for FY '24.
So we always approve the budget, the operating budget, and then we bring the revolving account budget in March. And so this is the first reading. We'll look for approval of these at our next meeting. I will tell you the two most important things. No significant changes in projected revenues or expenses. Some tweaking, but very minor tweaking in the accounts that we have. And at this time, we are not requesting any changes to any fees for any of our activities, whether it's athletics, transportation, community programs, any of them.
Do we have questions? I'm just going to go around if that's okay, so we don't get confused, Ms. Bicard.
I'm all set.
Okay.
Ms. Fietzke? No questions.
Okay, Mr. Hicks, you're up. I just want to make sure everybody has equal opportunity.
Chair Petrowski, I truly appreciate you keeping me on track sometimes. Dr. Milli, just one quick question. With our projected, where was it? Excuse me, transportation bus receipts, the revenue projected to be the same, we do have that contract has gone out. We've done a request for proposals. Do we anticipate that fees, is there any possibility or big possibility that fees might have to be adjusted with the new contract in terms of the cost? Or are we going to be okay with what we budgeted?
No, what we did is we incorporated the increased expenses into the operating budget. So basically, we don't collect $342,000. It's probably the most we've ever collected, so that's the number that we budget, but we only spend to what we collect.
Right.
And so...
That's the rule.
Right. So we'll charge some, let me scroll down to transportation. The, well, part of the contract will be paid out, the materials and supplies, half of Lucy McCarthy, who is our transportation coordinator, half of her salary gets charged to it, and then the rest comes out of the operating budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate it, sir.
Sure.
Mr. McDevitt?
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have an informational budget, budget status update.
Yep, so it continues as we've been projecting. You know, we're up a little bit due to inflation, especially around maintenance and HVAC. We've had more HVAC repairs needed this year, even though it wasn't like a harsh winter. But the equipment's getting older and needed a lot of repair and the costs of that are much more than they've been in the past. So working with the town manager, she's aware of our projection of about $250,000 over budget and so those expenses, because facilities has used up theirs as well. A lot of those expenses come from the shared facilities accounts that we have. So that'll just be something that town meeting will have a motion to transfer funds to cover those costs.
Great. Do we have questions, Ms. Bicard?
No, thank you.
Ms. Fietzke?
No questions.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes. Heating fuels, looks like we've only gone like through half of those lines. Do we anticipate that those are going to be? Well, I'm curious about like heating fuel, like, does that, when like do the heaters get turned off? Like, how do the heating systems work? Are we able to like move some of that money over to cover some of the things?
Possibly. There's always a, like a lag in those, those bills. So they'll get closer to the amount that we've budgeted, but there could be some and we would use that to offset the deficit.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. McDevitt?
No, nothing. Thank you.
I do want to actually just go backtrack a little bit because I quickly shared that Ms. Bicard's going to continue to work with the negotiation teams, but also that I have stepped in to work with the TAs. Ms. McDevitt is going to continue to work with the teachers. When we have our new members join, we'll discuss who will work alongside you. So, and then Mr. Hicks is going to now work with the administrative assistants. I don't think I made that clear earlier, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that Ms. Bicard's going to work as a, as a subcommittee member, if you will, but the members that are representing those negotiation teams are on the team currently. I think we're on to public comment. I think we pulled that right back onto scheduled time.
Madam Chair, impressive.
Stan Leibert, 43 Stone Cleve Road. I've already thanked Helen and Holly once for their, their service to the town. They've done a wonderful job over six years. The thing that struck me tonight is the school committee does meet every two weeks and these meetings are important to all of us. You know, we do a lot of business in these meetings and our town finds out a lot about how you all are helping us provide good education. But the other thing that, you know, people don't realize maybe is how much other work goes on, just what you're talking about now. Serving on various kinds of committees, cert committees, all kinds of things that school committee members do all the time, which is sort of, let's call it off budget. You know, people don't realize how much time has really gone into that. You know, not only have Ms. Bicard and Ms. Fietzke served as chairs at the committee in sort of some difficult circumstances, but they've served in any number of other capacities to help us. So I think, you know, that's just a whole separate reason for us to thank you so much for everything you've done for us.
There you go.
Amy Mabley gets the last word. Amy Mabley, 219 Main Street. I've never sat here before. This is kind of funny, but I really wanted to come for a couple of reasons. But first, I did want to mention, I have a sophomore in high school and when she came home on Wednesday after that woman spoke, I heard verbatim what you, all the stuff you said, I got from my daughter. And she said, I was so happy Mr. Jackson let her speak extra long and like, because the kids did not want her to stop. And she said it was the most incredible thing. So I do think that is also interesting to note that they haven't been in, you're right, they haven't had like a presentation like that in years. So that was really impactful. So thank you for that and thank you all for your work this year. But I was here to thank Holly and Helen for their six years of service. You were wonderful colleagues and you've been wonderful to watch on TV from my living room. While I'm eating dinner or relaxing over the last year, while you're all hard at work. But tremendous dedication, always prepared, always ready to discuss what's needed and consider what our students and our families need. So thank you. You guys are going to miss them, so.
Yes.
Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments?
Ms. Bicard, Ms. Fietzke, we've only got the opportunity to work with, together for a year, but I just want to say thank you so much for your thoughtfulness and your advocacy and being such wonderful colleagues. You've helped me learn a lot about how to do this role and do it well. So I'm deeply appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your time. Going, sailing off to the sunset, into retirement.
So I'll just say a couple of quick words. I could probably go on for a very long time.
We're on time.
I know.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I got two minutes, told George. I could go on for a very long time. You guys are absolutely fantastic and I have been extremely lucky to work with you guys. I consider you both friends. Hopefully you consider me a friend. But what I think has been amazing is in very different ways, you have given tirelessly to this community. And there has never been a question of your integrity, your compassion, your dedication. And I think there are a couple of things that are probably like, will be footnotes in North Andover history related to both of you. And Holly, I think it may be, you know, the space capacity study and facilities master plan and working to get that so we have a pathway to reduce class sizes and make schools for the next generation to come. And I don't think we could have done that without your leadership and your dedication to that. And so thank you very much for that. And for Helen, I mean, I think I met you for the first time when Stan said, you know, hey, you're running, you need a treasurer and Helen will do it. Meet her at town hall at three.
That's true, that happened.
And I think at the time, I said, why do I need a treasurer? I don't have any money. But, you know, the, the thing that I think of with you is, and we spent an incredible amount of time with negotiations and returning back to school kind of from the times of COVID. And they were not easy conversations. They were emotional. They were very, very charged. And you were very much a source of balance in that for the teachers and for the school committee and the administration in terms of the pathway to do that. And so I think it's been said before, but the community does not realize the amount of time that the two of you have put into this. And I've never, ever seen you do anything that one would say, this is a benefit or a betterment to my own kids. You have always looked at it from the community's perspective and that is incredibly difficult to do. And you have both done that with amazing grace. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew.
Sorry.
I'm not sure how to share much after that, but really I am so glad that I had the opportunity to join when I did and work with both of you. You've both supported me in different ways and I appreciate both of them standing by me and checking in and just helping me understand and learn and grow. I'm going to miss working with both of you. The new members have big shoes to fill. With that, I would, did you have comments you would like to share?
Oh, I'll just say that I've really enjoyed my six years on the committee. Andrew and Amy and Helen, I've served with the longest. So I feel like we're a little family in some regards. And when I was chair, it was Greg's first year superintendent, so we had a really good marriage right from the start. I think at one point, he said, Holly, I talk to you more than I talk to my wife, with the Columbia Gas thing and other things that were going on in town that year. So I really, I really enjoyed it. I was talking with Amy, actually, I think yesterday, and how bittersweet it is because you kind of want to stay, but you kind of want to move on too. And it's, it's definitely feeling like that for me. But I thank you all for giving me a very valuable, wonderful experience and I'm deeply appreciative, Andrew, of the fact that you recognize that we don't do this for selfish reasons, which means a lot to me. So, thank you.
Well, I mean, thank you all for your very kind words. It's really, I've said this so many times, it's really an honor and a pleasure to serve with so many competent and wonderful colleagues in the administration, the teachers, the community, you know, families, the student voice. It's really, it's really been a pleasure and particularly Holly. We came in together, we ran together, we served together on the superintendent search before we were on school committee together. Your thoughtful and steady leadership has been so valuable to me, I think it's been very valuable to the, to the committee and to the community. So I'm thankful for the opportunity to continue to serve, you know, for a little while on a subcommittee that I, that I value, that I, that I feel really strongly about. But it's, it's also wonderful to hear what we've been able to accomplish together. I'm not sure you mentioned the high school schedule change, which is tremendous. I'm so pleased for our high school and I, I feel like we're just poised to do such wonderful things with the school building projects that are, that are on the horizon, you know, immediately on the horizon, you know, the shovels in the ground, you know? And as always, I would encourage anybody who's watching to please be civically engaged. Please show up to the polls next week and vote for the candidates of your choice. Please show up to town meeting in May and support the projects that are going to need your support. And please do that every May. And please do that every last Tuesday of, of March. Because, you know, the, the national politics do make a difference, but these local politics and our local schools make a difference to your lives every single day. They affect your property taxes, they affect who's available to come to town and try to employ people here, they affect the, the children that we educate. And it's really exciting work and it's, it is hard to leave behind. Thank you all.
Thank you.
With that, I will move to adjourn.
I will second.
Wonderful. And we will...
Discussion.
Is there discussion? Let's vote, Ms. Bicard?
Yes.
Ms. Fietzke?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.